And we play some prayer for us.
Lord, we are grateful for yet another day that you so graciously grant to us and we pray that as we come together here as this body that we would be about the business of this county and the things that concern the citizenry. Lord, we seek your wisdom, your leadership in all things and make what we say and do be honorable and glorifying to you and you alone in Christhead. Amen.
And then we give the praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to three points two A, proclamation in the world, resolution, operations greenlight. We'll go to three point two A, proclamation of war, resolution, operation green light for veterans.
Sir Commissioners, we are asking that the board adopt this following resolution. Avery County Commissioners support Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of Avery County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who selflessly serve our country and this community and the armed forces. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas Avery County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes resignation should be granted, therefore be it resolved with resignation as Green Light for Veterans. Avery County hereby declares November 4th through Veterans Day, November 11th, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice for men and women in uniform, transitioning from active service, therefore be it further resolved. That in observance of Operation Green Light, Avery County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made miserable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence, adopted this third day of November 2025.
Need a motion to adopt the resolution?
Um, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's the three point two B, public comment. Anybody here for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and read this anyway. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during public comment. Any individual speaking during public comments should address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturb, or disrupt the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you have any questions about public comment, copy the public comment folder on the table with the sign up sheet. If you would like to speak to an agenda item or speak during public comment, you must sign up on the sheet at the door. Time limit to speak to an agenda item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Thank you. Move to three point two C, public comment on agenda items. Anybody got a comment on this?
Mr. Chairman, we have none.
Okay, thank you. Move to three point two D, board of organs, Avery County Parks and Rec, and Mr. Chad Morgan is, uh, applied for that, and so we need a motion to approve.
Move to appoint Chad Morgan to the Avery County Rec Board.
Aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move to the Avery County Fire Commission. This is a review, and we'll vote on that next month, and the person applying for the Fire Commission position is Tracy McCann. So we'll review that and vote on that next month. Thank you. Move to three point three, County Commissioner and Staff Items. Number, uh, three point three A is subdivision approval to reserve at nineteen eleven.
Good evening, Board. We are presenting the final plat approval for the reserve at nineteen eleven. This has met all requirements and has been through both plenary approval and final subdivision approval through Avery County Planning Board. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Board? Not even mentioning their prayers.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Get a quick signature.
Yeah. Level ten?
This is the same thing you did last month.
No, it's gonna bring you open.
I've got pens and highlighters and everything else in my bag. Not a felt paper.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll move to three point three, Dave Tax Administration.
Cindy's bringing your updated collection.
Okay.
Oh, she sent me the new documents and, uh, about on my desk. We just had to fill in the background. Okay.
Wow.
Please approve our October collections of one million four sixty-six, nine fifty-four, fifty-seven cents.
Need a motion to approve?
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We had no releases this month. Okay. Our revaluation sales, we had sixty-eight sales for October. We're at sixty-four percent. Last year, we had fifty-nine sales, and we were at sixty-three percent. The one thing I want to point out on here, I put it on here for a reason. The nine thirty-nine Golf Course Road, where we have the value so low, but then it sold for so high, that's not a tax office issue. That is a issue. Um, this lot was appealed back in the day, probably two thousand and ten, for no perk. We had a letter from the Health Department that it wouldn't perk. Well, evidently, this year, they figured out a way to perk it, but we didn't know that. So I just wanted to show you that. That can skew our sales at times, but I'm gonna, I disqualify those because we didn't have all the information to put an appropriate value on there because I've never heard of the perk system that they were using. So, but that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I got your questions.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hello? More to decide. We'll move on to three point three, C, County College, forty, forty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six badge, and that is four hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, need a motion to approve.
Sir.
And just, uh, we had, uh, Kayla to double check and make sure that was the minimum. That's right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go to three point four, County Commissioner reports request. Three point four A is County Manager report.
Good afternoon, Board. So first, we will start with a little update on Halyne, uh, just for the public and your knowledge. Uh, so far, on the, uh, storm debris cleanup, it's now at a one million fifty-five thousand cubic yards of debris has been, uh, cleaned up from the county. So that was our latest update. Uh, we have sent out a request for qualifications on our senior center for an architect. Our grant has been submitted through the Community Development Block Grant, so we hope to hear from that soon. Uh, High County Council of Governments is also working on some grants for the Red, West Brewer, sorry, Radio Tower and Green Valley Park on our behalf. And we are working, we have also out there a request for qualifications for the Little League fields and Green Valley Park. So just wanted to give those updates. Um, want to make sure the public knows, everyone knows, available food resources with the government shutdown. Um, area churches are ready to step in. Talked to several. Uh, Avery County Social Services, the Senior Center, Feeding Avery Family, Ram's Rack, Avery Family Impact, and children are encouraged to contact their school counselors if that becomes a need. Today, we did get word from Wake School's Restaurant that they will be feeding the community, uh, from three to six, and offer free meals and takeout service in the lobby at the Ched Long. So, um, I don't think, you know, I can think of any other community that has the resources that we have in case anything happens during the, uh, during the shutdown. Uh, for veterans, so this Friday, November seventh at eight, will be our Veterans Breakfast at the Senior Center, which is now in Elk Park at eighty-sixty nineteen E Elk Park Highway. And also on November seventeenth, at the library, at one fifty Library Place here in Nuland, there will be a Veterans Luncheon from twelve to one. So those are two opportunities, and we want to applaud and, and say thank you to all of our veterans. Uh, this time, I would like to formally submit and announce my retirement as County Manager and as a, uh, employee of Avery County. Um, and that will be effective February first, twenty twenty-six. And I would like to applaud the current Board of Commissioners' decision to name Ms. Cindy Turbefield as our Entram County Manager effective on the, uh, February first. So, thank you. It's been a pleasure.
About to say this. H C U God, we love you. You're, uh, you're a loved Avery County. It's shown over to you. You give the service. You truly love Avery County. You're what's best for Avery County. And I appreciate you. I love you. Joy to Avery.
Thank you.
Board of Com.
There we go.
That's all I got.
Sure.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to three point four two, proposal for contracted public information officer.
Sir Commissioners, as you know, uh, the day of, uh, Facebook, Instagram, getting information out has changed in our world. No one, everybody doesn't go to print. So it's become apparent that we, as Avery County Government, we need a PIO. And this is simply a contract with C Gardner Media and Promotions that we would like approved for the remainder of this year, and then we will renegotiate and step in effective July first with a new contract.
Need a motion to approve. Any questions? It's second.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to three point four B, Finance Officer Report. Mr. Paddy Hoben.
Good afternoon, Board. Have a few items here for your consideration. Uh, the Avery County Department of Parks and Recreation has received a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Carolina Hurricanes Foundation for the Little League ball fields to repair the damage from Hurricane Halyne. Request the board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment. The debit capital outlay of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and credit friends of park and recreation revenue line one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents in civil process fees to be used to initiate the sale properties, including advertising and fees paid to the clerk of court. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit civil process expenses two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents and credit civil process fees two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, the Avery County, uh, Department of Parks and Recreation received twenty-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-four, twenty-five from the Carolina Hurricanes Foundation for Schultz Circle Park to repair the damage from Hurricane Halyne. These funds were not spent and will need to be moved into the current year's budget. Request the board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay twenty-five thousand and credit fund balance appropriated twenty-five thousand.
Motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, as previously mentioned, the County Manager, Manager's Office would like to contract with the company to operate as public information officer for the county. This company would keep the county's social media website and various platforms updated with current information and upcoming events. It'd also distribute press releases as needed. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit maintenance contracts thirteen thousand five hundred and credit fund balance appropriated thirteen thousand five hundred.
Motion to approve.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, the Avery County School System receives state funding to replace the roofing of the gym at Riverside Elementary School. This funding will need to pass through the county and be distributed to the school system. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit Avery County Schools' capital outlay one hundred fifty thousand dollars and credit state grant one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Need a motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing the release of lottery funds pursuant to Chapter eighteen C and Chapter one fifteen C of the North Carolina General Statutes. Thank you to Michelle for preparing this resolution. Uh, it is, uh, to provide for projects, painting at the Avery County High School, nineteen thousand five hundred, electrical work at Avery County High School for twenty-three thousand three oh five thirty-six, and ceiling floors at Cranberry Middle School. Request the board to approve and adopt the resolution presented before you today.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the resolution and a motion to approve the funds.
Please, we approve the resolution as presented and to release the funds.
Please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And item number seven is a companion to that. That's just, uh, amending our budget to pass these funds through our, our county's funds, and that is the Avery County Board of Commissioners' commitment to providing the most adequate facilities for the students of Avery County of previously authorized funds from the North Carolina Lottery Repair and Renovation Fund to make repairs to the Avery County High School and Cranberry Middle School. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit Avery County Schools' capital, forty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, and credit proceeds from lottery funds, forty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Need a motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, the Department of Social Services, uh, had been awarded five thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, uh, that was remaining in the special adoption incentives for FY twenty-four, twenty-five. These funds will need to be moved into the current fiscal budget year. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit special adoption incentives, five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, and credit fund balance appropriated, five thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the last item I have for your consideration, the Department of Social Services had twenty-four thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents remaining in disaster funding in FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, they've been given approval to extend the, the time to expend these funds, but these funds will need to be moved into the current fiscal year budget. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit miscellaneous, twenty-four thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents, and credit fund balance appropriated, twenty-four thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have for y'all.
Move to three point four C, County Attorney Court. Anything else?
I do not have anything that requires the board's actions.
Thank you. Uh, three point five, staff reports and requests. Mary?
Please, again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Three point six, closed session.
I do not have anything.
Okay. Three point seven, get approval of minutes, October the sixth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three point eight, again, consent items. Any questions on those, you the board? If not, that'll be approved by consent. Three point nine, informational items. Mary, you have your informational items.
Just wanted the board to be aware, and I do want to brag on our veterans' office. Male, they're certified throughout the United States. So, good job.
All right. Three point, uh, ten, upcoming meetings. I haven't got there yet, Cindy. I'm getting there. Who is next, Mary?
December first.
December first. All right. And that'll be at six o'clock here, right?
Yep.
All right. If nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye. Need a second? Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please.
Please. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.